Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to ask if you can, will you please stand with us and recite the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Five is excused. Mayor Ford.
Present. Okay, at this time, we have any volunteers that would like to lead us in a word of prayer, since we have no clergies? Present. Amen. Thank you so much.
Journal proceedings, approval of minutes, regular city council meeting, February 24, 2020.
Second.
Are there any questions or corrections or additions? If not, if all is in favor, let it be known by the sign of eye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, the ayes have it. Next, we have the communications and report by the mayor. First, I would like to show a YouTube video. Focus your attention to the screen, please, behind you, for some of us.
Every 10 years, we get one shot, just one shot, to get counted.
So communities across Illinois give what they need to succeed, for things like healthcare, childcare.
New roads.
Yeah, he says two towns.
In Illinois, no matter who you are, or where you're from, I say, who are they, I say, they're important.
Why do they count it? Because the government uses the census to decide how much money the state needs.
For every person who doesn't get counted, we lose $1,400 a year coming to our state.
Why do they count it? In 1950, Illinois had 24 representatives in Congress. Right now, we have 18.
And we'll lose more on risk than we are not accounted for.
Fewer representatives means less support in Washington D.C.
Everyone needs to see them.
Everyone.
Children, renters.
Folks just getting by.
Me and you.
It's just nine questions, and you can read it online by now or before.
Everyone matters.
Everyone counts. Visit 2020 Census, and we count it.
Thank you. That's a good message. We all have to be counted. And April 20, uh, April 1st, we want to make sure that everyone in town, in the City of Country Club Hills, everyone in the Southland.
Hey, everybody.
Hey.
Hey.
Welcome to our world.
A brief interruption, sorry about that. Thank you so much for that video. And if anyone would like that, we can also share that with you as well, if you need a copy of that video. Okay, there's a couple items on the agenda in front of me here. And these are just some housekeeping items that we need to cover tonight. And item A and B, and I'm gonna ask the attorney to elaborate a little bit on those two.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first talk about item A, which is the Mac bankruptcy claim. Everybody's aware of the name Mac Industries. They were a high-flying purchaser of distressed properties and would then rent those properties out or resell them to, in a number of municipalities in the Southland. Mac had a lot of different entities, not only Mac Industries, but Mac LLC, Mac One, Mac Two, Mac Three. Mac is in bankruptcy, and at least one of the principals of Mac is in, is under other scrutiny. The Mac bankruptcy trustee has filed claims against dozens of individuals, corporations, and in our case, municipal corporations, claiming that money that Mac paid in connection with closings, inspections, and the like, which ended up being paid by the municipalities as they directed to one of their different entities, should have been paid to the bankrupt back in the state. So they filed these massive claims against a number of dozens of entities, including several municipalities. This goes back to the spring and summer. I don't do bankruptcy law, and over the last several months, we negotiated on behalf of several municipalities in the area who have, who have to defend these claims against Mac and through the trustee. It's intergovernmental agreement, essentially is a cost-sharing agreement among Country Club Hills, Hazelcrest, Dalton, Glenwood, to share the costs associated with the defense of these claims in the bankruptcy court. Everybody, everybody else, all the other municipalities have signed on. So I think this is a cost-effective way of defending the city's interest in the bankruptcy court, which, again, I'm not a bankruptcy lawyer, but as just a regular person, it sounds like a bogus claim. But it's a bogus claim, seeking a lot of money. And you can see at the agreement, there's a formula based on the percentage that size the claim bears on the overall percentage. Recommend that the council approve the IGA for legal representation. The attorney's name is Michael Desmond, with the Filio Silverman Firm, they do a great deal, I highly recommend it. Dalton voted it, Glenwood's voted it, and Hazelcrest.
Okay.
They contesting this, is that what you said?
Well, Mac, Mac has filed these large claims against, not only, not only against our municipalities, but against former employees of Mac, believe it or not, claiming that Mac paid them and they shouldn't have paid them. So it's a large, it's a large claim that needs to be defended. And, but by, by combining forces with the other municipalities, we should be able to much more effectively defend at a fraction of the cost.
Any questions, any other questions? You want to take them both together, just one at a time?
Let's take them one at a time, they're two separate, man.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion for Mac bankruptcy claims IGA for legal representation.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion the second. If there's no questions at this time, I would like to call for roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
Item B is with our partner Logistics. And this is a, kind of a form that they asked the city to sign. It's called a subordination agreement. When, when we buy a house, we take out a mortgage, the lender wants to be what's called first in line, and not to have any other claims that might arise interfere with the priority of the mortgage. Keep in mind, this would only occur if Logistics were to default on their loan, which we don't have any expectation that they will. But in reviewing the document, it, I couldn't agree, I couldn't recommend approval that the city would be in what we call the second place, because we negotiated the redevelopment agreement. If everybody recalls where we, where we negotiated, once the TIF gets into place and generates property tax revenue, that will be paid the municipal service impact fee. So I said, that's gotta be in first place. So they agreed to make the change that I requested, and it's found, if you go to page two, the, right near the bottom where it says notwithstanding the foregoing, so they made the change that we want, that, that our, our entitlement to TIF revenue under the TIF agreement come, is ahead in terms of priority of the mortgage. It says, in no, in those events shall the subordination provided by the agreement affect or impair our rights under the agreement, municipal services impact the agreement. So this relates to what I'm sure will be a, something that will never happen, meaning a large company like Logistics not paying their mortgage on this property. But if that were to happen down the road, we are protected, that our, our TIF fee takes it first place.
There's not Logistics 1, 2, 3, and 4, is there?
No, there's not.
Okay.
There's only one, and they're, you know, they've, they bought that property, 100 acres.
But if anything goes wrong, we want to be the first to get our monies. We don't want to be secondary, we want to be first, we want to be number one, but hopefully we'll never get to that point. So I need a motion on that, please.
Motion for approval for the subordination agreement.
Second.
Any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
All right, thank you, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're gonna call for the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Quite a few things, so bear with me. Bremen High School District 228, per communique from Bremen District 228, the district is honored to have been chosen to participate in the pilot program with the Chicago Automobile Trade Association. This program will offer, offer great opportunities for students in the district. As you may know, there's currently a shortage of skilled trade workers, not only for Illinois, but throughout the United States. It is the mission of the district to offer students a career-focused, career-focused courses that will ascertain the skills they need to leave high school with a plan for their future. Some of the trade-focused courses include Principles of Engineering, Manufacturing, Material Processing, Automotive Mechanics, and Automotive Technology. For more information, please contact the district at bhsd228.com. Also, I have information on the program over on the table to your right, to my right, your Spring fling is coming, Saturday, April 4th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at City Hall. As Black History, as February was designated as Black History Month, I would like to share that every month is Black History Month, and Black History is a celebration of, embracement of diversity. Black History fact, President London Baines Johnson signed a Voting Rights Act guaranteeing African-Americans the right to vote. The bill made it illegal to impose restrictions on federal, state, and local elections that were designed to deny rights to vote by blacks on August 5th, 1965. With that being said, I want to remind you that we have an upcoming election on the 17th, and right now, early voting will go on until the 16th of March. Sharing information, the Country Club Hills Police Department has a Citizens Academy that will meet on March 5th through April 9th, here at City Hall, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please contact the police station for more information. The police department has their February and March news blotters on the website. All information, again, is on the website. And lastly, Country Club Hills Black History Fact, Freedom Rider Miller Green resides in the City of Country Club Hills, and our own honorable, honorable Mayor James W. Ford is the first African-American mayor in the City of Country Club Hills. End of report.
Thank you. Okay, no treasurers report tonight, so we'll move on to the committee report. The first committee that we have on the agenda tonight is the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett, Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to move to item E first, approval for general obligation refunding bond ordinance, and that's just in case if anyone have any questions or anything while Mr. Kim is here.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor. Are there any further questions?
It's just that, we're, Mayor, we're looking to recall one of our bonds and hoping to get better rates and save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars by refinancing. We're not extending the, the length of the bond or anything, we're just going out for better rating at this time.
All right, thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, we actually, Alderman, we are extending it for two years, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kim's here. It's two years, right?
That is correct, yeah. It could be one year, but as rates come down, that means we don't have to allow as far, but I think there's a maximum.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, could you, Mr. Kim, could you highlight the, just for the public?
Can you come to the mic?
Thank you. Just highlight the?
Yeah, just the potential savings, if you can, I don't know if you have.
Sure. So, in, in aggregate, there's probably gonna be around $200,000 to $300,000 in savings over the life of the bonds. We are structuring it such that the bulk of the savings occurs in years 2022 and 2023, which coincide with the payments that the city has to make in lieu, in, in light of the firefighter's lawsuit. So because the city's budgeting expenses will go up because of the firefighter's lawsuit, what we did was we structured the debt service payments to come down in those years to give the city a little bit of relief. Now, in order to do that, we did have to, or we will have to extend the bonds, as the Alderman said, by a maximum of two years, but we felt that that was an appropriate sacrifice for the city to make in order to provide some budgetary flexibility for the city's finances.
Okay, any additional questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, I have a motion and, on the floor, I have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, it's kinda in line with this almost, is the approval we discussed about the line of credit for $750,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions?
Yeah, may I be recognized, man?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to find the finance meeting, the minutes, but we did, oh, thanks. There was, at the last meeting, at the finance meeting, we actually, it was a question for the purpose, is it for emergencies? And one of the concerns that I have is that we have not outlined the procedures for this. I mean, in terms of how we're gonna be spending it, is it, are we insured that this money will be coming back to the council for us to approve any expenditures? And that hasn't been lined out, we haven't actually went through that. And I think there was another issue Alderman Evans brought up, I'm just trying to find it, because it stated it was for emergencies, but there was a question as to what defines an emergency, so there was just some unanswered questions that we haven't had opportunity to discuss.
To your first question, the emergencies will be determined by the council, the Finance Committee first, and then from the Finance Committee to the council. So it would not be something that the staff would control, it's up to the council and the Finance Committee can set the terms for the emergency. That was my expectation for the Finance Committee, to determine what you deem to be an emergency. And we can add that certainly to, to the ordinance stating that until, you know, you determine what that is.
I just need to add that language.
But it would be, this is really an agreement with First Midwest Bank, if that's, if I can?
Yes.
Piggyback on that, it would be subject to the condition that no draw against the line of credit would issue without council approval. But is that, that's not in the? No, I mean, that would be, that would be a condition of the motion. Okay, and what about the, like, outline of the procedures, like, what can, I mean, it says emergencies, but what else can it be used for, and, you know, what? I'd like to see that spelled out. The council would have to. I mean, the council can do that, but we can certainly move forward with proposing some conditions or circumstances. Usually, it'd be a sudden need for a sizable amount of money combined with, you know, the time of the year problem that we've talked about before, so we could certainly do that, and you could do it, Anthony, you could do a double-barreled condition, subject to the condition that no draw will issue without council approval and until after appropriate procedures.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Yes, that was me that asked about the, what defines an emergency at the finance meeting. I'm, I don't think we're clear on what an emergency is, and that's what we're trying to establish. I'd like to see that clearly established before we approve such line of credit. At the last finance meeting, it was discussed, or the finance director said the line of credit that we are applying for said, we're only approving to get it, not to use it. So I'm not understanding why we would need to get it if we're not gonna use it.
Well, the purpose of getting it is, is when we come into times when, when we don't have revenue from the taxes and all, that was discussed in the finance meeting, that at those times where we could not fall behind in paying bills and everything, that we could use the line of credit to do what's necessary until tax monies come in. Now, again, she stated that the monies, we will get approved for the line of credit, and we don't have to use it until needed, so that was discussed a couple of times in the finance meeting.
Yeah, and we're.
And now, we, again, we have agreement that we're gonna add to the language that we're only, it'll, it'll be deemed by the Finance Committee in order of what's considered as an emergency. I think at the time, not only does the line of credit, that it's something that we need and we don't have to use if not needed, but it's also, was discussed with the refinancing of the bonds, that this also helps them with the refinance of the bonds to have a line of credit.
Okay, I wasn't finished at the time, however, but I, my opinion, I'd like it to be clearly defined before we agree upon such a line of credit, because things seem to change in, in the city regarding the finances, and I'd like to see a little bit more clear establishment on the uses of the money, the non-usage of the money. For example, no, no theater things should be considered an emergency whatsoever.
Well, we've already discussed that also, that the theater wouldn't be a part of it and wouldn't be part of an emergency.
But I'd like to see, what I'm saying is, I'd like to see it clearly defined, not just discussed.
And again, we shouldn't put this off of the line of credit that we have that's gonna help our bond ratings and refinancing of the bond. Secondly, is that, right now, we can have it approved, and it's already been said, what did you, it's got to come through the Finance Committee before any monies could be released anyway. So that's three votes out of the Finance Committee. So you can't use the money unless we approve it anyway, correct?
I'm agreeing with some of what you're saying. I'm saying, we need to get that in writing first, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, we can put it in the motion with the?
We, we're saying, we discussed this, we discussed this, but it's not concrete, so that.
But we can put it in, in the motion of the approval of it now. It's already, he's already, the attorney said that with this is that this money is, what's considered an emergency has to come through the Finance Committee first before it's considered yea or nay.
Point of order. So for the conditions to be imposed, there needs to be a superseding motion to clearly articulate what those conditions are, and then a motion to approve. So the motion has, there has to be a motion to approve the conditions, and then a motion to approve the, the line of credit.
Okay, so we restate the motion again, according to what the attorney just said.
So the motion is to, for approval of the line of credit, that the monies is only to be used in emergency purposes and must be approved, whether it's emergency or not, through the Finance Committee.
And the council as well.
As a whole.
As a whole.
Is that correct, attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's included in the motion itself. And so, when, when the Finance Committee meets, they would have to come up with some terms and conditions, which is the right way to go with that. Are there any further questions?
Actually, that's a good point, that the Finance Committee, there's not gonna be a draw on this money tomorrow.
No.
Finance Committee, Finance Committee can meet and plug your, do's and don'ts as a committee and get it to the council.
Sure, sure, sure.
May I be recognized? I was a little confused about what she said.
Attorney, can you restate your mo?
So is there a motion? Sure, so there is a motion to approve the conditions, which you outlined, which would be that the, any emergency has to be defined by the Finance Committee and then passed by the city council before any draws could be made. And then, once that motion is approved, if it is approved, there is a motion to approve the line of credit itself. Is that clear?
That's clear now.
Yes, so we have the first motion. If everyone is clear, we have the first motion. And at this time, I want to call for a roll call.
Do you need a second?
I didn't, I thought we got a second.
No, there wasn't a second.
It's a superseding motion.
We need a second.
There wasn't a second?
There wasn't a second.
Oh, okay.
That was articulated, that'll be it.
Right, so, yeah, so that was the first motion, Alderman Lockett articulated, we needed a second to that.
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion with a second on the floor.
With the conditions.
With the conditions. And roll call.
Alderman Lockett.
With the conditions that this money is only to come through the Finance Committee and approved by the city council, yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yeah, before I vote, I didn't want to belittle it, because I spoke on the issue, but all we got is actually a memo from the interim finance director, and a couple points. This is a loan doc fee, and this is only for one year, so, I mean, it doesn't spell out the terms, one year from what, today, to, and, 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 and furthermore, in the minutes, it's, we stated at the finance, it will not affect the bond, it's right in the minutes, so, and we don't have any clear defined, I mean, I'm not seeing anything, so my vote's gonna be no.
Okay, thank you.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Evans?
No.
You're four.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the mayor's vote, we, because we have five aldermen, we need fi, three of the five aldermen to vote for the motion to pass.
That's agreement on that one.
Well, now it's two to one.
Okay. All right, that's second, does that mean a majority rule?
So I would recommend that it just be tabled until there is the ability to get a majority vote on the motion.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
So let me clear, let me be clear on this again. Explain that again, why the mayor can't break a tie?
Because there are five aldermen, the law requires a majority of the aldermen to vote on this matter. A mayor, the mayor is not an alderman, so they cannot break the tie.
Thank you. I've rendered a written opinion to the contrary, so council should vote however it wants to vote, and we'll sort things out.
And I also have rendered a written opinion contrary to Mr. Murphy's written opinion that specifically cites the law, whereas Mr. Murphy's opinion cited no law. The law specifically states?
Excuse me.
Section 3.1-40-40.
Attorney?
Sir?
You didn't ask, I mean?
Counsel, may I please have the floor?
I make a motion to recognize our attorney.
You didn't, you didn't, you didn't, I mean, you just start talking, you didn't ask to be recognized, you didn't say anything, that's not proper.
Sir, may I please be recognized?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Section 3.1-40-40 of the Illinois Municipal Code specifically states, as it relates to an odd-numbered board, which this is, it is a five-member board, is an odd-numbered board, states where the council consists of an odd number of aldermen, however, the majority of the aldermen shall be sufficient to pass an ordinance. Need a majority of the aldermen to pass an ordinance. If you want to count the mayor as a part of the body, a majority of all six of the members of the board of the city council, a majority is four, so that would still need three aldermanic yeses.
So, that would still need three aldermanic yeses. The law is clear, it's not ambiguous, and the argument has been presented that the mayor, under section 3.1 dash 40 dash 30, is allowed to break a tie. So, that comes into play when you've got an even number of aldermen on a board. So, for instance, what is it, four or five years of, maybe five or six years ago, when this council used to be stacked with ten aldermen? In that situation, when it was a five-five vote, the mayor had the ability to vote, to break the tie. Now, it's an odd-numbered board, so therefore, this provision of the municipal code applies. As it relates to when the mayor can actually break a tie, if it's a two-two vote, there are certain instances where the mayor could do that. Those instances do not include times when an ordinance is being passed, when a liability is being placed upon the city, or when an expenditure of money is being made. Those instances instead include something, say, for instance, if the mayor wanted to appoint somebody to the beautification committee, and it was, and there's no money being spent in that instance, that, say, that was a two-two vote. The mayor could break the tie in that instance, because it does not fall within the purview of section 3.1 dash 40 dash 40 of the Illinois Municipal Code. The law is clear. I do not think it's a wise thing for the city council to ignore the law and for statements to be made, well, we just need to sort this out in court.
Attorney, attorney, you just gave it, you just gave us the law. I think that's probably sufficient.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Now, I heard, I heard a motion.
Yeah, the motion currently is to table.
Okay. Who made that motion?
Davis.
I did.
And you second, so it's been a motion to table. I have a motion and a second, and I need a roll call, please.
So, let me ask this, so where do we go from here? Because if two vote no and two vote yes, so what are we going to do? We going to dance all night, or we going to do the work with the people for the city of Country Club Hills? I'm just not for sure.
It's, it's clear that they don't want, they don't want the mayor to have any say in this, you know, so we'll let the public decide that in the future. But as we speak, we don't have an agreement, we don't have a line of credit, and so we just keep kicking the can down the road, and the taxpayers end up being the ones who have to suffer. Okay, so I have a motion to table.
Alderman Lockett?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
So, here we go.
Which is the reason why the state law provides that the mayor votes where the vote of the aldermen has resulted in a tie.
In a tie.
Actually, in this instance, the mayor could vote, the mayor could vote to break the tie.
Let me finish, please.
Please.
Is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Thank you very much. Thank both of you very much.
Okay.
Everybody uses the word very clear, in my mind, state law and the city code, it's clear. The mayor's opportunity to vote is limited to where there's a.
Non-binding.
Now, this, it doesn't matter, we don't have, nobody, I don't expect certain people to agree with me, whatever I say. So, but that's, that's what the law is, and it's designed for precisely this circumstance.
Point of order. So, in this instance, where there is a tie to mo, a tie to table the motion, the mayor could vote, because that vote does not have to do with any expenditures to the city or ordinance. So, the mayor can vote to break the tie, just for table.
But still, we're still in the same spot.
And it fails.
We're still in spot.
In that case, the motion fails, and there can't be a decision on it. So, we have to move to the next point.
Well, it passed with the mayor's vote, the underlying motion passed with the mayor's vote.
No, he didn't vote on the underlying motion, he voted on the motion to table.
To table. Oh, I did before, but you.
No, because that vote has to do with an expenditure of cash, the mayor can't break the tie.
Understood, but we have a disagreement about that, so it's, he voted, it'll be a question of the legal effect of that vote, if it comes to that. But he's voted, so the matter's over. He voted.
But he can't vote.
Whether it has an effect or not, that, that's for another day.
Or the mayor could just wait two weeks, when we have the full city council, and the full city council could actually entertain all these matters, out of respect to the city council member who is not here because of a medical condition.
I understand that, and I would like to ask that everybody, you know, ask to be recognized before they're speaking out. Please. This is a civilized meeting I'm trying to host here. So, no problem. But we're still in the same predicament here, so. Okay, well, let's move on.
Um, let's get this one out the way. Approval of vouchers for February 24th, 2020, and also approval of vouchers for March 9th, 2020, in a total amount of 1,118,908 dollars and 98 cents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of the vouchers. And if any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Oh, motion carries, thank you.
Next on the list is the approval for the theaters license agreement.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Any further discussion? In case you did not get the latest edition of the contract, the contract is for one That was the request of one of our aldermen, so that request has been earned. One-year contract to be reviewed and discussed at the end of one year, if we will proceed for year two and three, which will be '21 and '22. Year's '21 and year's '22. Yes.
Well, the, the, or the operator, the licensee, has already put up $85,000 from their pledge to book a couple acts. I know that time is very, very, very short, because we're in the March, and we may be past the, we certainly passed the peak of the, of the time to book, but they have, they have advanced the down payment for two events, the estimate is, there'll be maybe 11 events all year.
Okay.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
There was some questions about the, there was posed, I seen a memo, the, particularly our, I mean, this is a for-partner, a for-profit partnership, and would this have any effect on our tax liability with the city in terms of?
Yeah, this is a, this is not a property interest, where it's a lease. This is a license, which is a limited right to use the space. The best example of a license is a ticket. A ballgame or a ticket to the theater, it says, you've got the right to sit in that chair until Mr. Davis's crew begins to clean that chair for the three and a half hours. That's all it is for these, these loved by, not a property interest. Let me mention a couple of the other details, Anthony, you'd be interested in. The, the city is not going to be obligated until the licensee produces adequate insurance for us, which has to be done by May 1. That's, you know, we had a kind of a chicken and the egg thing. The agreement calls for revenue sharing, allocating, everybody's read it, the individual responsibilities, and where it was a three-year deal, I think Alderman Spivey requested that it be backed down to one, so that's what, that's what we're for you tonight.
What about the, it says in there, split the profits, I mean, how do you spell out any loss?
They would, they would split the losses as well. Actually, what's going to happen, well, I don't want to get into details, but there, there will be the finance, the finance director and their staff will set up a separate account that fines will be deposited into. So, if there's a loss, then they will then share the loss as well. If there's a profit, they'll share the profit.
Yep. Alderman, this, this arrangement does not guarantee, it, it's, hopefully, there is a profit, but it's, they're at risk as much as we are.
Also to mention, if I can, is that I had them to put their monies up front for the first two shows.
Yes.
To show some type of interest, other than wanting to be a partner or a licensee for it, so that's 85,000, or 80, 85,000 dollars of their money up front, before we even spent a dime.
Yeah, the agreement calls for, by May 1, in addition, that they, that they put $260,000 minus what they've spent, so they've, they've expended that money in the hope that this agreement will go through.
And I want to say too, that this is the first time, first year since I've been involved in the theater, that we've had anyone to come to the table and invest $250,000 in a theater. We've never had that before. So, this is a new ideal, and it's a new way that we need to pursue, to make sure that at the end of the season, there's no burden on the taxpayers for the acts of the summer. So, we're trying to make this work. We have the theater, we can't get rid of it, we owe bonds on it, and we're trying to get some of those bonds refinanced, but we've paid millions of dollars for the theater years ago, and now we are left to pay those bonds off. And so, we don't want to have to pay bonds off and then have to use taxpayer dollars for the operation of the theater. So, that's why we were looking for investors to come forward, to be willing to invest in our theater. And so, this is the first year that we've had anyone to put up any money up front for the operation of our theater. So, I think we're headed in the right direction. If you would allow us to turn the corner, this might be a significant turnaround for the theater.
Let me get, Tiffany had one very good point on the agreement that I addressed in, in section 1A, which is the grant of the license, she raised the issue. We talked about this is going to be primarily a Saturday venue. What happens, what happens on Saturdays if there's no event by the, by the licensee? So, I added language that we retain our right to use the premises on Saturdays when, when the place is.
And just so you understand, we have, the city has events scheduled in between the dates that the operator is not going to be using. The first event is going to be on June the 6th, and Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Miller is doing a youth day celebration here at the theater, so she's leased the theater for that night, and she's talking about bringing in young acts like, what's the rapper's name?
That's local.
No. No. Chance, there you go, thank you, who said that? She's thinking about bringing in Chance, the rapper. She really want to do a lot for our youth in the community, so she's working with this producer out of New York, and they pulled this gate, this date together for June the 6th, and they want to just lease our theater, they have a big youth program, and I thought that was great. And then, the other program that we have scheduled is August 8th. August 8th, we have the Jamaican Fest. If most of you've been to Washington Park, well, that fest that they had, that used to be in Washington Park, will be here at Country Club Hills. Okay, so that's going to be an all-day affair. So, we're trying to bring in different activities to our theater. So, we hope to do some other things. If you have some ideas, I was talking to my, my, my commission over here, he has some ideas as well, that, that we're going to try to incorporate into the theater, so I guess, anybody else want to discuss anything?
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, I just had a quick question. I know that another thing I had emailed about was a concern related to putting an indemnification clause into the agreement. I did not see one in the revised iteration that I received about an hour or so before I got here, so I was wondering what was the status of an indemnification clause? Had they refused to agree to it? And could there possibly be an indemnification clause put in the agreement that would require JJ Group to indemnify the city, if there is any sort of change in the tax status of the property?
JJ Group is a limited liability company formed in this venture. I'm more concerned about insurance, so that's why I put the insurance language that I did into the agreement. I don't think it's realistic to ask them to indemnify for the possibility that nine days of events will result in Country Club Hills Theater being subject to real estate taxation. But the key is on insurance, that they've got to, they've got to provide comprehensive insurance that will satisfy the city, and that's set forth in section 9 of the agreement.
So, what happens then if the Cook County assessor decides that, based on the use of the property, that it's being used in a for-profit manner, and determines that the property should no longer be exempt, and starts charging real estate taxes on the property?
Confident that the assessor won't do that, having talked to their office.
And we, we can lease a theater to any producer who wants to come, without having any effect on the taxes?
That's not always true. There's certain leases and certain license agreements. It's more based upon the use of the property, rather than per se the language in the agreement. At least, that's my understanding of how real estate taxes work at the assessor's office.
I think at this point in time, we've had quite a bit of, quite a bit of discussion, and I would like to move the vote ahead. I have a motion, I have a second, and I've had discussion. So, at this time, I would like to call for a roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Point of order. So, we have the same issue as before, because this is regarding expenditures or funds, so we need a majority of aldermen to vote?
Well, it's the same, it's the same issue.
Right, it is the same issue.
So, it's an open issue. So, I'm not deferring to your opinion of that. My, my opinion is that this is valid. Now, this is even one where the missing alderman wants this thing to proceed.
Right, but he needs to vote on it.
Maybe he'll, maybe he'll vote.
Well, we, the recommendation is that it be tabled, so that he does get the opportunity to vote, so that be on order. That is my recommendation, as a parliamentarian, that it be tabled, such that you have five aldermen, and the majority gets to vote on it.
The table's a little late now, because the vote has been taken, so that's.
Well, the vote has been taken, but the vote fails, because there's a tie. So, because there's a tie, you can.
Yeah, we're going in circles here. Yeah, we, it actually didn't fail, okay, it, it became a tie, so it didn't, it didn't fail. And the mayor voted.
Well, it didn't pass.
Well, it, it did pass, it did pass.
It didn't pass, it was a tie. Tie is a tie.
So, you can't ignore the fact that the mayor voted. You can't ignore that.
We can, because you're not an alderman, and the statute states that it shall be a majority.
Now we have on the agenda next, Lord and Ordinance Government Operations, Alderman Gillespie, Chair.
Yes, no report at this time.
Okay. Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, Chairman.
Thanks, Mayor. I need, I seek approval for a 2020 CDBG resolution. This is a CDBG grant that the city applies for every year, and it's based on pavement resurfacing, and it, it looks for us, our proposal this year is for about four-hundred-thousand dollars, and it's for six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty feet of road surfacing, and the county's requirement that the areas have to qualify as low to moderate boundaries. The, the areas that we have proposed, that we think that we can get qualified for, section on Indian Hill Drive, Russet Way, Russet Way, Cypress, one-hundred-ninety-fifth, and we're thinking one-hundred-seventy-fifth place, one-hundred-seventy-ninth, but these are part of the proposed areas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a, a second. Are there any further questions?
Yes, you said one-hundred-seventy-fifth place?
Yeah, I don't have the exact boundaries, Alderman, yet, but, yeah. And we'll be discussing it once we put the final proposal in.
Yeah, your committee will have the opportunity to define those streets and validate them and everything. Of course, we got to get the money first, though. They gotta, they gotta award us the money first, then we can decide on what streets it's gonna be.
That's something different.
All right, so...
All right, now, that's fine. Oh, and the next, I, Mayor, I just wanna make mention that at the next Public Works meeting, we're gonna have a pavement assessment program. There's, it has to be a public meeting, where there was actually a grant, we had them, they're gonna have a software program, so we can keep up with the streets that need to be repaired. But once we can schedule a meeting, we were trying to do it on the sixteenth, but we realized that that day we can't, so...
Yeah, that's, CMAP is doing that.
That'll be the next Public Works meeting.
I think on the sixteenth would have been an admin, but to the public, that's the day before the election, and we will not have an admin on that night because this room will be taken with machines and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, but that'll just be the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, sir. Okay, next, we have...
Wait, they need to vote?
Oh.
Second.
Oh, see?
There was already a second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it was, it was already, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And that was the end of Alderman Davis' report, so now we're gonna move on down. Oh, did, what happened? I have a Economic Development?
He said he'll do it next meeting. He'll do the presentation next meeting.
Okay, so that's gonna be postponed till next time? The awards, new business awards, I mean, Business of the Year?
Yeah.
Recognition of the Year, okay. Okay, so let's move on down to the next one, would be Insurance Risk Management, Alderman Evans?
No report from the committee.
All right, thank you.
A floor to the public?
Second.
There's been probably motion, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of eye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. If you would like to speak to the council, please come forward and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dwight Taylor, I'm with the Evangelism of Grace for Country Club Hills, and as we saw the video about the census, I just have a few announcements. The bailings for the census will go out this week. The portal, for the, the online portal will be available this week, and to, to get our residents out to participate in it is very important, as we saw earlier. And we here at the Evangelism of Grace for Country Club Hills, we're going to have a April fourteenth meeting at Grand Prairie Library at six-thirty, to talk more about the census and the importance of the census, and what it means to each individual, as well as some information about voter registration. Also, one last thing, in conjunction with a representative from Congresswoman Kelly's office, we're going to have an informational meeting about the viability of a South Suburban Airport for the Southland area on March twenty-eighth at the Brothers Keepers Community Outreach Church in Chicago Heights. Okay, I'm gonna have some flyers for anyone about that, about the availability of a, the importance of a South Suburban Airport for all of our, for our community. And that's the, that's it, thank you.
This is Brothers Keepers on Lincoln Highway?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Next person, please.
Mr. Mayor, to the council, my name is Leroy Barnes. I live in the one-hundred-and-eighty-first, this row. And I'm rising because I have concern. I've been to several council meetings now. Last meeting and this meeting, me, we did get some things resolved tonight because you did pass some, some bills or paid some bills. But the other portion of it is counterproductive to me. Last month, what we didn't discuss tonight, which ended last month, was the subject matter of salary ranges. That was discussed last month, and two Aldermen got up. And if there's an issue with the articles of law that we have to buy by, I understand the legislative attorney and the city attorney have some differences, then if it's an outline that, that covers where the mayor has to vote to include the, the two Aldermen that voted against it, two up and two down, and the mayor has to, then let's, let's see that in writing that overrides that. But for us to come here every, every, every council meeting, I'm sure all the residents that's not here don't know what's happening. That's why I made some phone calls to say, do y'all know what's happening here? Because we pay you all to do a job.
Yes.
Not to walk out. And if you're walking out, that doesn't resolve the issue. It needs to be discussed, it needs to be handled. Now, here's my other issue. If an Alderman is not here, what's to say he's gonna be here next month? We don't know. If you say he has a medical condition, what if that medical condition continues? So does that mean the city council's at a standstill, and we can't conduct the business? There has to be a provision that if any event, an Alderman can't come, is there a proxy vote? Where he can express how he feels and how he wants to vote. That way, is voted up or is voted down? That's simple procedural procedures. This city should not be held at a standstill because one vote. So I know we had to pay bills, last month, the state, the issue came up. I know we, we had a standstill now with the line of credit, okay? And so Alderman, the mayor, you all work for the residents, and I'm standing here to say, you know, a counterproductive meeting doesn't make sense. To walk out, that doesn't resolve issues. I feel like I was back in Chicago looking at the city council. So it's counterproductive. Let us do the things that we need to do, either in finance to get the answers, and if the finance committee has a responsibility and a job to do to bring some recommendations back to the city, let's do that. If we need some guidelines to cap these salaries, because as the mayor stated last month, if they don't have, the units don't have no guidelines, they could go all out ridiculous, and at, at the end of the day, it's gonna be on the taxpayers' backs to make up the difference. That's my understanding, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. Hosea Gray.
Hello.
Okay, a couple of quick talking points. Will there be a public hearing on the 2021 budget? So we can see where this money is supposed to be coming from. I know you're supposed to have a person doing the theater, which should have been done fifteen years ago, what you're doing now, having someone else, having a person come in and lease or rent this theater, should have been done fifteen years ago, and not have us lose fifteen million dollars, taxpayers' money. Let me finish. You know it's true, so they know neither you saying anything. Number two, fifty-seven eighty Lodge Park, are they gonna stop using that? Are they gonna go to work up there? Or are they gonna stop using it for an equipment storage area? Right there at the front, I've taken pictures, Mr. Gillespie said they, they were working last year, they wasn't working, and they haven't started this year either. Red light cameras, Tenley Park is going to eliminate them. We need to either eliminate them or use that money in a specific account to rebate back to the citizens, back to the homeowners. And if you don't wanna do that, then we'll see about a referendum to get it done. This seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar line of credit, because you have a shortfall, because you've been taking from two-hundred to a million dollars out of the budget to do this theater. That's one reason you've been having a shortfall, okay? So now, and to have rules, that have no rules set down and restrictions on emergencies before you say, okay, we're gonna approve seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, okay? Now, we're gonna set some rules and, we're gonna set some rules in force now for what we're gonna use it for. That's like letting a horse get out of the barn, okay? And then you close the door. That, that theater license, how much are we getting there altogether? You may not have an idea, but you should, on how much this is gonna pay us, and exactly what we're gonna be on the ropes for. And also, how that line of credit connects to the bonding? And so, because we've already been paying the bond for that theater, and we've already been footing the bill for the cost of running that theater, so that's two sets of money. We've been paying the bond for the theater, citizens have. This bankruptcy deal with, with MAC, okay? Now, how much totally is that worth? How much totally is that worth, that bond? I mean, to get that bankruptcy? And how much is divided between these cities? And how much will we be on the ropes for with this MAC bankruptcy lawsuit?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else before we close the floor?
A couple of things on, first of all, I wanna thank you all for, for the fight. And I hope it continues. Bond maturity, I have a question about the bond. I know you're gonna call yourself, you're lower interest rates, but there's things and clauses within that bond, just like this bond that's matured the first one, it would have been a penalty, we financed it, I bailed out it early. Same thing with this bond coming up too, even though we might save three-hundred-thousand dollars, what is the penalty if you decide to pay it off early? That's one thing, okay? Now, getting back, I gotta give Mayor some brownie points on a quarter of a million dollars. That is a start to try to get the theater, to get some type of funds into the, I think it's a step in the right direction, whatever, you're still here today, and I just wanna give Ms. Brownie points for trying to do that. Another thing is the voting part, a two-to-one, I mean, it is the law, and by you superseding what she's doing, you're kinda breaking the law. And so it's disappointing that Alderman Lockett will say, well, we'll deal with that in court, when it's already lost its setup, and what she said, Alderman, they're rights. So I'm sure it's other stipulations that you can bypass to get to the point where you wanna go, but to bypass, to break the law, that's exactly what we're doing. So I wanna know, if somebody could answer me, if we did this previously, how can we bring those rules, those things that have been passed, two-to-one, shouldn't have been passed, based upon the laws that have been set for the Aldermen, how they pose a problem with that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No one else? Anyone? I'd like to close the floor to the public, please.
Motion to close the floor to the public?
Second.
There's been probably a second motion, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of eye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Next time, this time, the last time, we started with Alderman Spivey, who's not here. This time, for the automatic reports, we're gonna start with Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a couple of points. We are elected to, to be a fiduciary over the finances, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on that sometimes the residents don't really realize, and I'm gonna make a couple of points, because we, we, we had a contradiction today, so we're asking for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar line of credit. Our general fund for the last three years has been going down. We're over eight-hundred-thousand in the hole, and that'll show up when we get our audit. Also, we voted on the theater tonight, and we're just trying to do things where we can actually have things factually done. And I wanna show everybody this, this is the line of credit we got, we got a memo. It doesn't have any terms, it doesn't spell anything out, so as an Alderman, electric official, we have a right to get the answers that we need. And if we don't, we have to exercise whatever right that we do. And I cannot sit here and just allow us just to keep doing stuff like this without making a point and pointing it out. Anybody's welcome to see this. When you do your mortgage, or you get a loan, you tell me if you would vote on something like this, or you would authorize this, and this is what we got. Secondly, as far as the theater, I've been a proponent of the theaters, when I was first elected, I was the chair of the theater committee. We spent a lot of time, so I know the planning that goes, goes into it. I also realize we have never turned a profit, so you're right, we do have to do something different. And I wanna make one clarification, the mayor start bringing up other events that we're gonna have at the theater, doesn't have nothing to do with this contract. We can still have those same events, and that's how we should use it. I mean, those are great events, I agree with it. We gotta use the theater, it's here. But for us to, to make a commitment, to my understanding, and I'm not, I don't have facts on this, but this was shared to me by one of our Aldermen, the individual that we voted on had a show last year that wasn't successful. So if you, okay, when you do that, and then when you know what goes into planning for the theater, you know that it's, it's March, chances are, what's gonna make a difference this year, and we're still on the hook for half? And now we're talking about salary freezes, financial crunches, but we almost going into this knowing we're gonna lose money. We haven't turned a profit. Just because we're splitting the risk doesn't mean that's gonna make a big difference. So, and we just not putting the timeframe of this is just not right. I mean, in the past, we, you would have known acts, there would have been some advertisement, I have no idea. I mean, I'm sitting here on the council. I mean, we haven't gotten that information, that hadn't been presented to us. So that's why you see, see this kind of disagreement. I mean, that's what we're elected for. I'm not sitting here just to okay everything. That's not what I'm for. The mayor makes little innuendos, let's let the residents see. I think the residents know who represents them, and they know who fight for them, and we're gonna continue to do that, and sometimes, unfortunately, you're not gonna agree with what we do, but we have to do things in proper order, and it's gotta be done properly. If you don't do it, that, that's not right. Hosea, you asked about, you're welcome to see this, but with the, with the, lost my train of thought, with the MAC Industries, they're trying to get three-hundred-and-two-thousand from the city, and this breaks out the percentages of fifty-fifty split, and our percentage would be like thirty-one percent, but you're welcome to see this too, and it'll break that all out. Also, wanna make one other point, just to make people aware, why I'm really kinda uncomfortable with this theater. Couple years ago, we made an agreement, we sat here with Smooth Jazz Chicago, they told our city that, I'm not going, I don't wanna make a dime, I wanna see you guys make a profit. But we found out, and I never saw a contract, it never came across the council, we actually paid them, paid them a thousand dollars and some other fees, which I can't clarify, so that's why I have a distrust with this. I mean, I can't vote on stuff like, and you can look at the facts, and Smooth Chicago was here, and they didn't turn a profit, and they got paid. And they got paid, they brought their own people in, and that was nothing we talked about at this council, so. With that being said, that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lockett, please.
Thank you. Just wanna thank everyone that came out to the Black History Play, well, job well done. The residents and the people that put their time and effort in the city, the employees and everyone, I must say, it was a job well done. That's the end of my report.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes. I'd like to thank everyone for their input. My opinion in regards to this seven-hundred...
Thank you, Alderman Lockett, please.
Thank you, um, just want to thank everyone that came out to the Black History Play, um, well, job well done. The residents and the people that put their time and effort in the city, the employees and everyone, I must say it was a job well done. That's the end of my report.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes. I'd like to thank everyone for their input. Uh, my opinion in regards to this uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's has to be approved by the city and this, by the city council. So the money is not gonna be spent unless we get approval from the finance committee and the city council. So I don't think we in jeopardy by getting a line of credit. My opinion. Also, we as a council, we have to work with the with the mayor. Whether we agree with him or disagree with him. It's our job to work with the mayor and work with all the city council members. We have to work together in order to make the city a successful city. That's the only way we're gonna get things done, is we work together. Uh, powding and bigotting among ourselves, that's not gonna get things done. That's gonna create a lot of strife, a lot of gender, and we don't need that. We need action within the city. Those are things, we are responsible for making things happen within the city. And let us make these things happen. It's our responsibility to make things happen within the city. See, end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Evans.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have a lot of notes here, I want to give some feedback to a couple of questions that came up, my response to that. But I do want to, I agree with Mr. Graham. You said we have a good fight here and that's exactly what we're here for, is to fight on behalf of the residents. And sometimes you have to protect the residents and uh, they don't know a lot of the behind the scenes that go on, a lot of the discussions, a lot of the information that we get, we don't get. And we're doing our best to um, protect the residents and sometimes it's not pretty and sometimes it's not polite. And that's, I believe, what most of us were put here for, because we are able to speak up, we're able to challenge one another, we're able to to ask questions. I know that's why I here, I ask a lot of questions. Um, and I ask a lot of tough questions, they're not necessarily tough, but they're common sense questions that oftentimes don't get asked. You would, you would not believe that there's common sense questions that are not asked, like uh, Alderman Davis shared. We get a one-page memo on a line of credit that we're supposed to approve right before a council meeting. Would you do that with your own finances? Would you not ask questions about your own finances? Would you not challenge those things? I'm sure you pretty much well would challenge them. The resident asked about the law in regards to the difficult that we had, difficulty we had here uh, this evening in regards to passing uh, some of the things that are on the agenda. And there is a specific law to that, that is the Illinois State Statute Law, sixty-five Illinois five slash three dot one dash forty forty. Again, Illinois State Statute, sixty-five Illinois five slash three point one dash forty dash forty states, where the council consists of an odd number of aldermen. However, the vote of the majority of aldermen shall be sufficient to pass an ordinance. The mayor is not an alderman. The magic word is alderman. There must be three, in this case, an odd board, must be three aldermen that pass. And I'm somewhat offended that our city representative attorney would recommend that we just sue each other when on a regular basis takes home thirty-five thousand dollars a month. And his recommendation was just, just sue each other. That's exactly why we're in this position. Are those exact things. Why do we need a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar line of credit? Most would say, well, because like most municipalities, you know, ti- we get our monies a majority from the property taxes, which we get twice a year. So when you pay your tax, property taxes, most people pay them through escrow, but some people pay them out of escrow, but they get paid twice a year. And that's when we get a majority of our money is twice a year, that's when we get the bulk of our money. So, just like anybody on a fixed income, it can get tight at certain times of the year. And yes, it gets tight. But most cities are able to manage that tightness for those one or two months that they have to adjust their budget. But in our case, we've created such a massive deficit that it's become unbearable that we cannot hold through those two months before we get our next payout. Let's start with the multimillion dollar firefighter lawsuit. This firefighter sued the city, prior to her suing the city, arbitrated and was asking for fifty thousand dollars in a settlement.
Mention, Alderman, if you're gonna, if you're gonna say, let's mention that, that that was, that was under tender of Welch. And that was Welch that caused that lawsuit for fifty thousand dollars. That's not the Alderman that's sitting here.
It doesn't matter. It was arbitrated during this, it was arbitrated during this timeframe.
Excuse me?
It might have started under Welch, but it was, it was.
Alderman, please, can we, can we halt for a minute?
This is my report.
I understand, just, can you halt for a minute?
I think we all understand that and you can continue, but you know, I don't know why we need to drag out stuff that happened twelve years ago.
This is the middle of my report. It doesn't matter what I choose to say, it's what I choose to say during my report. Alderman Lockett? It may very well have happened or originated under Welch, but it was arbitrated under this, this mayor. This mayor was presented with an opportunity to settle for fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a lie.
It's not a lie.
That is a lie.
That's what she originally asked for.
That is a lie. That didn't happen, that happened back in.
Again, I'm in the middle of my report.
Well, you lying now.
If you want to counter afterwards, you can counter afterwards. Yes, you do.
No, I don't.
Yes, you do.
You have to tell the truth.
This is my report.
You have to tell the truth now.
I am telling my truth, just like you'll have an opportunity to tell your truth. She originally offered fifty thousand dollars to settle. We as aldermen were told and called to an emergency meeting the night before the case was going to trial. This case went to trial and she was awarded eleven million dollars. Attorney Murphy, you know, you're being, you're being pulled into this, you're being asked to pay some monies towards that too. Because everybody played their part in it. So yes, it originated under Welch, but it was settled under this case for eleven million dollars. As a, because we don't have eleven million dollars, we had to structure a payment plan. And this attorney wanted their money, a bulk of their money upfront. So we're having to pay millions of dollars upfront and then portions as the years go on. We're talking about the theater, there was eighty thousand dollar given to silent partners to arrange acts. We've never recovered that eighty thousand dollars. Wasn't that a referral of yours, Lockett?
To answer you, I have no clue what you're talking about.
ADP, it was a rhetorical question, it was a rhetorical question.
We shouldn't have to go against, I mean, come on.
It was a rhetorical question. We borrowed an employee sixteen thousand dollars. Did we forget about that? We borrowed an employee sixteen thousand dollars. He needed a cash advance. Remember that? We have tons of late fees we have to pay because we've been holding back bills. We owe ComEd. Since we haven't paid ComEd, luckily they don't turn folks off like that. Sixty-five thousand dollars because we haven't paid them in several months. And that's amongst other bills we haven't paid. We've fired employees who've arbitrated and have come back that we've had to pay years' salaries for because we fired them inappropriately. We've had overpayments to employees. Our current general fund balance is negative eight hundred thousand dollars. We're on a trend of losing two hundred thousand dollars every year. And our own bond person says that was unable to finance, find a financier for our bonds because we've been downgraded to a triple B bond rating, one rating above, above junk status. Oh, and by the way, all the monies that we've asked residents to contribute towards the water bill for future infrastructure. Remember a year ago, we came and we said, this money is to be used for future water infrastructure. If we continue to get our water from Oak Lawn, they want us to contribute five to six million dollars towards the infrastructure development. So we're asking households to pay an additional six dollars and we're asking businesses to pay their portion. Guess what? They rated that, they're using that money, it's gone.
That's not true.
Gone.
That's not true. Sir.
Gone.
That's not true. Most of this is make believe stuff, that's not true.
It's not make believe.
Most of everything she said tonight is not true. The majority of everything she said is not true.
Uh, Alderman, Alderman?
It's not make believe, I'm still in my report.
Yes, hold on a second. There's, has to be some clarity here.
You can clarify during your report. It's my report.
Just let her continue. She's making up for the fact that she walked out of the meeting because the taxpayers money.
And just because, and and I'm making it up, the same way I'm making up that employees didn't have benefits last month.
Yeah, you're making it all up, I don't know.
I'm making it all up.
Most of the reason why of the lawsuit and everything, you're the chairman of the personnel and everything, why didn't you step in and do something?
We need to pay the bill.
Why you want to blame everybody else?
Because we didn't pay the bill.
Yeah, no, that's not because we didn't pay the bill, because you haven't had a meeting.
We didn't pay the bill.
That's why.
When you don't pay the bill, things get cut off and it's sad that the people that particularly need and work this city.
So you only know half of what's going on.
Excuse me.
Can't go to the doctor and can't get seen by the doctor because they don't have benefits.
That's why we're asking for the line of credit.
To pay benefits, so our employees can have benefits, exactly.
That is true.
That's what I'm, that's the point I'm trying to get to. We're asking for the line of credit for these reasons. For these exact reasons.
Yeah, but the finance committee.
And they're mistakes and they're due to poor management. And so for you, for you to just come to us and ask us, hey, just throw us extra money without correcting the mistakes to begin with, so that we wouldn't be put in this position, is what I'm saying.
Alderman, I didn't ask you for that.
Again, I'm still in the middle of my report.
Can you please continue so we can go on?
I'm trying to, but I keep getting interrupted.
You got to tell the truth, though.
Uh, this is my truth. You'll have an opportunity to tell yours. I asked residents to participate, pull FOIAs, ask for that information, look up the information that's provided to you. Lots of things are online, lots of information is online, talk with your aldermen. Again, pull FOIA, public information, ask for this information. If you don't really know who to believe, hey, I'm indecisive here, what's going on? Pull the information for yourself, educate yourself. And I've always encouraged people to educate themselves. You don't have to take it from me, I'm not saying take it from me. I'm saying educate yourself, find out for yourself, then come back here and say that wasn't true, or yes, that absolutely was true. So I I will also say that I don't believe in entertaining the theater discussion again while we're having the discussions of cutting salaries. I'm not saying we don't need to have conversations around that. Freezing salaries, cutting salaries, benefit, people not having benefits, employees not having benefits, things of that nature. But yet we want to continue to entertain a theater that has never turned a profit. Now, there's another way that we could consider, you know, somebody coming in and leasing the theater. It's not a proven science, though, it may or it may not work. But all I know is that we're coming, asking for monies, but yet you're still turning on the lights to the theater over there. There are ancillary monies that this city still has to pay, even though that theater is being leased out. So if you think we're just, our hands are free of it, somebody's coming in and leasing that from us, that's not true. There's ancillary costs that we'll still have to pay. And I highly doubt that if they lose money on that theater, they're gonna split the loss with us. I've never seen it happen. If we can't recover eighty thousand dollars from somebody who walked away from eighty thousand dollars and never gave it back to us, how do you expect we're gonna recover monies from a loss that they have? We're not. They're an LLC, they'll just file bankruptcy. So I'm asking folks to really think about what's going on. Don't get caught up in the, the, the masquerade of, of things. Come to the other meetings, come find out and you'll, you'll hear that folks aren't even getting the answers to common sense questions. But yet we're up here with responsibility on our back to pass and put off onto you seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar lines of credit. But yet, like Mr. Gray said, uh, you know, we'll figure out the details later, just we need the money now. I'm pretty sure we do need the money now, there's been a lot of mistakes and a lot of errors. And I'm asking that those be corrected first and identified first, so that we don't keep making the same mistakes over and over and over. That's all I'm asking, because I get calls from residents about taxes, about red light camera tickets, about the prob, the, the issues they're having financially, and it all boils down to this. I just want to make sure that I covered everything, I gave out the, the statute number. Yes, that is the end of my report, thank you. Wait, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. There was two, two questions that, uh, that Mr. Graham had. Early payment penalty, there is an early payment penalty if we pay, try to pay off within the early years. So there is a penalty, they, they expect to, when they refinance bonds, they expect to make so much interest. So they don't want you paying it off earlier, so they're not gonna make their interest. So in the very beginning part, there is an, a early payment penalty. I'm not sure what year it converts to no early payment or refinancing, but there is an early payment penalty. And then I think you asked about the salary ranges. Uh, and then I think, Mr. Gray, you asked about the twenty twenty-one budget. And the twenty twenty-one budget, I've heard nothing about, so. Um, the finance director is now a new finance director in Long Beach. So I don't know if she even cares about Country Club Hills anymore.
All right. Uh, just a few fact checks here. I think we, uh, you know, like to share information, but I can tell you that we all have to tell the truth when we make statements because we all gonna be accountable for the things that we say and do. So we want to make sure that we get everything correct. First thing I want to correct, yes, we, you, the citizens are paying additional fees to the water fund. Because in twenty twenty-four, uh, we will have to cough up about four thou, four, four million dollars to uh, Oak Lawn or either choose some other uh, water source. And that's not only us, that's um, Matteson and also Olympia Field, we're on the same line. And so what happened was years ago, under the pre- previous administration, as they did infrastructure improvements, uh, city, they would present Country Club Hills with a bill and we opt out to pay them. And so therefore, it kept accumulating. So by the end of um, twenty twenty-four, when our contract expires, in order for us to renew, then we're gonna have to pay all of those infrastructure improvements that was made by the previous administration and also um, the ones that have been made recently. However, that the fund that we are accumulating to um, to match that, that four million dollars that we're gonna need, we have a separate account that we put money in from the water fund to be ready for the twenty twenty-four uh, payment when it comes. And that money is secure and we can't take it out. Is that right, Treasury? We have one point four million dollars in that account and it's in form of a bond? T-bonds. So we can't go and take money out of the T-bonds, so that was not a correct statement. The money for the additional water fund is there and is. The money for the additional water fund is there and is accumulating interest on a regular basis. The line of credit is nothing new. The previous administration had a line of credit and was way more than 750,000.
To be exact, it was 6 billion dollars that we paid twice.
Yes, and I'm getting to that. Now, we, our last audit, we had a deficit of about 800,000. But when I first came to office, the city was on the hook for 6.1 million. And since I've been in office over the last five years, we're down to 800,000. Cause we had to pay the counter back from the money that was received, 6.1 million dollars that was, and everybody knows that, cause it was in the news. And so when I became elected, that was in front of me. And I had to make sure that that 6.1 was paid off. So from 6.1 million dollars down to 800,000 is progress in my mind. We're getting there, but it took us six years to get there. And this is something that we didn't accumulate, but the city had to pay it. And so that's what we did. And so the mismanagement of money, that's not happening because since I've been in, in office, you haven't seen Country Club Hills in the newspaper? Before I became in office, there was always scandals going on in the city. And so that's really what's going on. The CPA, uh, the, the young lady who's now in Long Beach, uh, Long Island, wherever she is, uh, she's still wrapping up some stuff for us and she's done a great, uh, job for us here. And, uh, I appreciate the time that she came in to work with us. We're in the process of looking for, um, additional help in our finance department. And so I'm confident that we're gonna be able to find that right person to help us to continue the legacy that we have started here. And, um, we do everything we can to protect your, your tax dollars as much as we can. And my thing is, we have to work together. We cannot be divided. Together, we can be successful, but divided, we fall. And so this council, I don't know what it is, since I've been here, I have not received the support that I should have been. Okay, I'm here to do the right thing. You know, I'm not here to draw a salary or anything like that. The money didn't, didn't, didn't encourage me to come here. Okay? But I'm here to make sure that as long as I'm here, that I protect the taxpayers, as long as all the aldermen are trying to do the same thing. We have to work together. I would be pleased to say or see in this community as a group of Af-Americans that we pull ourselves together. And I know that's hard to do because across the country, there's no togetherness, there's no trust in each other. We have to go beyond that. Uh, we just celebrated Black History Month. Um, there was a lot of people that sacrificed a lot for us to be where we are today. And I just think that we need to just reconsider and work together. I'm, I'm not opposed to answering questions. I'm, I just asked, uh, Alderman Davis a few weeks ago if he wanted to be the city manager. I'll work with anybody who wants to work. You know, that's my purpose. So with that, um, don't forget, early voting started. Super Tuesday for, for Illinois is gonna be next Tuesday, week from tomorrow. Uh, go out and vote. And also, don't forget the census. We all have to be counted. 1,400 per person for 10 years, per, 1,400 annually for 10 years is a lot of money to lose. And we don't want to lose a congressional seat as well. So we want to make sure that everybody's counted. So with that, I need a motion to close.
Before we adjourn, Mayor, would you tell whoever Public Works fixed that clock that they, they went the wrong direction over here?
I certainly will get that done.
Okay, motion for adjournment.
Okay, uh, just gotta note, the next regular council meeting is gonna be on March the 23rd, 2020. So we have a motion. Uh, all those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries. And if you want to come forward and speak to the mayor and/or the alderman, please come forward.